Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our first board meeting. Well, business meeting in the new school in the Commons area, so. I'd like to start with.
By your allegiance. And to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We had a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Awesome.
All in favor? All right. This is somewhere any visitor recognition, all right? Onto consent agenda, we have a motion to through consent agenda.
The motion to approve a consent agenda.
Maybe.
Second.
Thank you, George. Any discussion on it, we have the board meeting minutes from last month. Finance report, if everybody wants to make any comments or state anything. First minutes, which we were just handed out for the month. And approval of the activity accounts. Any? Any questions down here? Down this way? All right, all in favor? All right. Information items, so we'll look to Superintendent Berg.
Yeah, a couple of exciting things, first of all, I want to say thank you to both principals and the school staff for putting on some tremendous Veterans Day programs for the veterans in our community, they did a really good job with that. I do want to update the board that I did send to the Minnesota Department of Transportation, the letter formally requesting that the front of the highway out here be named a school zone. Yet to hear back from the commissioner, however, District Seven did deny the request again. In their denial letter said that transportation officials would be reaching out. They haven't at this time, but you know, we put forth our best effort to try to see what could happen. Julie just handed these out as well, these are updated dates with Minnesota School Board Association events, workshops and activities that are coming out. If you're ever interested in attending any of them, let me know, all they have to go with you as well. And then the next big thing is here in the next couple of weeks, we are going to roll out our strategic planning survey, so the community engagement community met tonight. And took a look at all the questions that are going to be put forward as well for communication. Including some advertisements that will be purchasing in the local papers as well to inform the public, so. My updated, anyone's got any question?
Yeah, down here. All right. We'll now look at two principals. Allison.
All right, well, um. We had a big Paula Murphy's fundraiser recently and we raised approximately fifteen hundred dollars. That money will support Firebird Pride events and we're grateful to all of the families who purchased pizzas. As Superintendent Berg said, our students honored Veterans Day with activities, this year it was during specialist time. And there was a video message from a local veteran, Jesse Grant, along with singing of the National Anthem. Students wrote letters, created artwork and colored pictures for soldiers currently deployed. In addition, we are also collecting items for care packages to send to local service members who are deployed. And students honored veterans that they know by filling out an informational sheet and placing it on our veterans wall on the Commons area, so you might want to take a look at that, it's over here on your way out, if you haven't seen it. Other events, Playworks recess coach Julian was on site to train our fourth and fifth grade students how to be junior coaches at recess. They've been doing a great job planning for and playing games for our younger students. Each coach has one recess assigned to their group per week. And we are really thankful that we received a ship grant to help make this all possible. Conferences were very well attended and it was great to meet with parents and families. Students enjoyed a harvest party festival, each grade had a costume parade throughout the building and did activities during their specialist time. It was a bit chilly outside and we had to move some activities into the Commons area, but it was still a fun day for the kids. Our students are practicing for their winter concert, which will take place on Thursday, December eighteenth at one thirty and six thirty in the Commons area. Andrea Hansen from Compass will be here tomorrow and Thursday to work with our staff on best practices in math instruction, the new math standards and everyday math. T-Bird Community Arts has a holiday cantata coming up on Saturday, December sixth at seven P M. at Peace Lutheran Church in Winthrop. And on Sunday, December seventh at four P M. in Saint Andrews Catholic Church in Fairfax, a free will donation will be taken.
What kind of items are you looking to collect for the soldiers?
So a lot of it's like toiletry type items. Beef jerky, things like that. So, yeah, we're doing that through the twenty first, so. Yeah, we're excited to get those things and put them together and care packages, so.
Okay, and it's been about two and a half months now in the new facility, how we're working out the bugs and everybody's used to it by now.
I think it's going really well, you know, obviously, there's things we're continually adjusting to just because new things get done, you know, for example, we just had the playground for a while and now we have the playground in the blacktop, which has been great. So, yeah, but I think overall, everybody's doing really well and we're just getting used to everything.
Sure.
Thanks.
About to work around. Mrs. Stevens.
Yes, so I will, of course, again, just be I guess, sharing about the staff and what we're doing, then I'll let our student council do the rest for the students. So tonight I'll provide an update on key initiatives and progress at our school focusing on three main areas. Our staff and professional development, our PBIS program and school culture. And our ongoing efforts to strengthen community communication with families. I'll highlight the ways our staff are refining instructional practices, our staff and student council are developing leadership skills. The impact of our proactive behavior strategies and how we are using data to drive decision making and support student success. So student leadership. I would like to thank our student council members for their excellent report again this month on student activities and events over this past month. Beyond providing valuable updates, the student council is developing important leadership skills. They are learning that leadership is not about doing everything themselves individually, but about coordinating with other student leaders and teachers to produce clear, thorough and well organized reports for the board each month. In this process, they are practicing delegation, collaboration and effective communication. All of which are lifelong skills that will serve them well in school and beyond, plus they get to spend extra time with the principal. Staff development and instructional practices, so as noted in last month's report, our staff continues to focus on refining teaching practices and implementing research-based strategies that promote student engagement. While our staff have made significant progress, this remains an ongoing priority. Our teaching and learning coordinator has been working closely with new teachers to build their knowledge and skills around effective instructional practices. I am currently in the first round of evaluations with our non-tenured staff and will begin the second round after the holiday break, which also includes many tenured teachers. This work allows me to engage directly in the learning process and supporting our teachers in maximizing their effectiveness. Meanwhile, our professional learning communities continue to advance their inquiry cycle focused areas. Collecting both qualitative and quantitative data to guide instructional decisions and drive measurable student outcomes each week in their PLCs. Our staff is also continuing the E L A Ola training that Jennifer's coordinated for us and also continuing on our math compass training for our math teachers at both the middle school and high school level. PBIS and school culture. As a secondary site, we continue to strengthen our PBIS program. Our PBIS team has been instrumental in training staff to address behavior issues proactively and reinforce positive behaviors, which reduces the need for punitive measures. The team is now analyzing behavior referral data to identify patterns and connections between student behavior and our engagement in the classroom. These insights will guide instructional refinements and targeted professional development for our teachers in the future. Student feedback on our reward system has been positive and our team continues to refine and maintain this PBIS program. Over the past two years, these efforts have played a critical role in transforming our school culture. By using this behavior data to inform instructional decisions, we are enhancing the student's engagement, supporting the teachers and classroom management and also improving our overall outcomes in both the classroom and with our students' behavior. Family communication, we're also working to strengthen communication with our families. Teachers are encouraged to maintain ongoing dialogue with parents and families are encouraged to reach out to teachers as well. Our goal is to build trusting partnerships between home and school. Additionally, teachers continue to notify families weekly of any students who are at risk of failing, supporting both short and long-term academic success. So, in conclusion, over all these initiatives focused on staff development, student leadership, proactive behavior support and family engagement are helping to strengthen our school community, improve student outcomes and sustain the positive progress we have achieved over the past two years.
Are you got any questions?
Hi, I'm Madison Steele, I'm the student council president. First sports, girls basketball began practice on November tenth with their first scrimmage on November fifteenth. Boys basketball and wrestling both started practice on November seventeenth. FFA has been active this year with events including regionals and state trap shoots. Judging contests for dairy, horse and general livestock and annual corn drive, which raised about fifteen thousand dollars for Truth Friends Camp. The general livestock team placed third regionally and will advance to state in spring. Over recent activities included fruit sales and upcoming events include soy, soil judging, leadership development events on November fourteenth and a volunteer cleanup at Minio, Minio, Minio State Park. Student council is planning holiday events, Turkey Bingo will take place in class on November twenty fifth with cookies as prizes. Winter week includes a Christmas movie day on December nineteenth with candy and popcorn available. Planning is also underway for Valentine's Day Sweetheart Dance on February sixth. NHS has been busy with trunk or treat events, a successful blood drive collecting twenty seven units and a food drive gathering twelve boxes of food. Upcoming projects include making Christmas cards for local nursing homes and assisting with a library craft session on December thirteenth. The Source program is off to a strong start, recognizing one student per grade weekly with with rewards like extra tickets, special seating, leaving class early or using the Source parking spot. The program promotes being spirit-filled, optimistic, accountable, respectful and safe. October thirty first, monthly drawing winner were Ruth Messner, Colin Hacker and Klythe Hacker. They received a Firebird t-shirt, a free slice of pizza from Casey's and then had an option to get coffee or tea at the new coffee shop in town or go to Florence Pizza at lunch.
I'm Cole Jacobson, I'm also a member and student council and National Honor Society. The fall play, How the West Was Done, had a school only performance on Halloween and public performances the following Saturday and Sunday. This Western comedy included slapstick humor, puny names and exaggerated circumstances that gave our audience plenty of laughs. The cast is now preparing for the winter one act play, which will compete in January or February. Veterans Day, on November eleventh, the school honored veterans with a program featuring the concert band, choir and the Winter Honor Guard. Guest speakers Cadet Brady Nieber and two L T Samantha Rist spoke about Army values of loyalty, duty, respect, selfless set, selfless service, honor, integrity and personal courage and how they connect to daily life. The sixth or twelfth band, Grade Winter Band Concert is December eleventh. Students are preparing challenging pieces and two high school students are auditioning for All-State Band. This is a high honor as the audition process is very rigorous. And if selected, those students will be performing with the best of the best players in the state. Many students, especially freshmen, are also interested in solo and ensemble contest this year. The choir has had a strong start this year with fundraisers for the Florida trip and performances at school events. The winter concert is Monday, December eighth, featuring all five ensembles. GFW's five incredible ensembles have been working hard to prepare an exciting concert for the community. Ranging from familiar carols to new arrangements that students have been preparing in their rest. Pop choir is also preparing for community performances during the winter season. M E F and Adventure Future. Seniors and juniors attended the Minnesota Education Fair at MSU Mankato on September twenty ninth to explore over eighty colleges, universities and military opportunities. Sophomores attended Ignite Your Future at Ridgewater on October eighth, or October tenth. Engaging in over seventy five hands-on career exploration activities.
Very good, both of you, thank you.
When was that? The band and the choir gonna, I'm sorry.
December eleventh. The band does December eleventh.
The concert, choir is December eighth.
So you're, it's Source program, right? Is, so that's a couple of months old now, are you seeing more participation even or less or what's your?
Yeah, the kids pretty excited about that or?
I think so, yeah, a lot of people are like, let's go, I got a source taking one of your classes on that, so. Yeah, yeah.
I've seen the parking stalls with the signs at the job, so it's still continues to be a hot item, the, even award winner of that. Okay, good. Very good. Sorry.
Isn't that's a competitive one for sure, proper freshmen want that one.
Well.
They can roll in right before classes start, you know they have a surprise.
I gotta imagine that new coffee shop is getting a lot of interest too, because every time I drive through town, half that school seems to be walking across, it's very good.
So we, I guess we should say too that we're looking, you know, to our local community, more specifically currently right now in Winthrop. Because that's where our kids are, but we will also be, you know, looking to work with our local businesses in given to also expand our opportunities for us, our kids to have some of those incentives that are within our community, so.
Very good.
So, if someone wants to donate for your care packages, they have until the twenty first.
Twenty first, yep.
Till the twenty first, whoever can, so, okay.
And I could just be dropped off at the front door.
Front office, this was fine, yeah, thank you.
Anything else, Amy?
No.
George.
Don't set up anything.
Okay, we will move on to Dasher Report, so. I think it's educational if they stay here, but you're free to leave if you need to. All right, Dash Report, so they're staying atop of their OSHA required monthly safety training. Worked with Dakin to replace a broken coupler, you know, so this looks like some maintenance in the winter of school. Worked with Pop and Electric to fix an exhaust fan at the elementary school. And still continue to move a few things out of the old building over here. They note some roof drains from fall leaves, changed some filters. And got the boilers ready to run for the winter, so that's the Dash Report. Uh, well. Move on to Riverbend.
Mercy. That was a quite a positive meeting and report this last month. They have some sixty eight students in their area learning center. Twenty four online and forty four in person. All the sections, Imprints, Raptors and Rise, Almond, ALC are pretty much full. Then did well, one of the more enjoyable events during the month were the pumpkin patch and the corn pit and the hayride. Apparently that, all sections enjoyed that. One of the things I think is worth reporting is that the Raptor section, more than sixty five percent of the students are at average or exceeding reading levels. And in the Rise students, there are sixty nine percent on reading bar. So they're doing quite well in those areas. But then there was one area that I think everybody should be aware of. And this was when I think assessing students' abilities or progress. One of the terms, one of the areas was morphological awareness, and I'm sure everyone is aware of morphological awareness. No? I'm not, no, nor was I, I had to find out what is morphological awareness. So that is the Greek, using the, or being aware of Greek and Latin suffixes and prefixes in terms of language usage, reading and the rest of it. A very worthwhile area to judge, but only government education could come up with a word like morphological awareness to describe it, so. And that is the end of my report.
Does anybody, you know, when they get down to Riverbend, did they ever come back? I mean, can we generally get them back?
Yeah.
And how do we judge that if they're good enough to come back?
There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into it, like are they there for, you know, academics? Hands-on skill set, are they there for emotional behavior? Disorder, dysregulation, you know, there's certain like points and progress ones that they need to make when they go down there, or they're brought back here. But they do, there are students that do graduate out of those programs.
Did you see school districts are getting declining enrollment, but down there, Riverbend's getting the other way, going up.
Yeah, and it, you know, one of the things too that's hard when, when you talk about Riverbend too, right, there's seven other school districts that are attached in there. Obviously, the giant down there is New Ulm. You know, out of the sixty eight ALC students, I think that, is that what you had said?
Yes.
Thirty six of them are from New Ulm. So, and we've got less than ten that are there, so they're kind of one of those things where it just depends on geographic location. The other piece with that, and I don't know, did you vote on it in September or October with Cedar Mountain now joining Riverbend?
We, yes, we discussed that this last month.
Yeah, so there's another district that's now going to join the special education co-op, so there'll be another influx of numbers based off what Cedar Mountain starts to bring down there too.
Which should be very valuable.
Yeah, it should be, yes.
So they don't anticipate having to hire additional staff to support Cedar Mountain?
That, right now, no. But, you know, one of the, one of the things that's most difficult with special education staffing is you just don't know what students are going to be in front of you at any given time.
And actually, executive director Doug Hayes, that is no longer teaching. Which means that they did find a teacher to take his place, which is kind of nice.
But it sounds like they're doing very well down there.
But they are, the, I forgot to say, the financial situation, there's improved. But they are, the, uh, I, I forgot to say, the, uh, financial situation, there, there's improved. Well, simply because the way they get reimbursed, among other things, but.
They were hurting a couple months ago, but is their weight on government line, just like everybody else?
Everybody.
Okay. Well, very good. Any, any, have anything to add or comment, question? Okay.
Advise everybody to watch your morphological awareness.
You're just gonna add that to your, uh, your curriculum?
We're already working on it. We already got it.
It helps with comprehension.
So, uh, update on policy committee, we're going to vote on a mountain of policies on the second reading here coming up, so not much more report, other than we're going to be meeting here probably pretty soon to start, yeah, passion out the
The next round.
The next round. We're, uh, can't wait to put that in my calendar, so.
I bet.
Um, okay. How about FFLRP?
We got an update from old, maybe voting on that later on. We've done the school year at the middle school, high school, we're having the moving over here during the business. There is, there is a fair amount of communication about that, email and all, book papers reported on it, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, anything else, anything? Anything that we can put our hands about and do in order?
No, it's all pretty downhill.
Yeah.
Slow, it's all gonna get much done. Disappointing.
Um.
We're gonna have, everybody who does it in this school by the end of the year. It's amazing, it's gonna be awesome.
It looks like it's gonna be awesome.
And that seats how many people?
Four hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little over four hundred, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else to add, FFLRP? Okay. Community engagement's been awfully busy, so, Emily?
Um, we met tonight and, um, and we thought it would be a little bit longer, but it was a pretty quick meeting to discuss our strategic planning, so um, have our questions and timeline ready, and we'll vote on that here tonight too, so, which more information will be coming?
Yeah, but I think the meeting before that, didn't we get into some of the, we looked at some of the future you know, kids we can have in declining enrollment and all kinds of, or declining population is gonna cause us the kind of
Oh, in FFLRP, you know, yeah, so that was one thing, um, we did talk about that in FFLRP, and we did talk about that in community engagement is, you know, declining enrollments, almost every single district, except for Indetta, apparently, who's filling two brand new schools.
And you're spending a four-year.
Yeah, it's facing declining enrollment. You know, one of the things with us is just the resident pupil units within our district have started to decline significantly over the past couple of years. Um, just a few years ago, there were over nine hundred K- twelve students living within district boundaries. Now we're down into the mid-seven hundreds of K- twelve students living within district boundaries. That's driven up the census data. Um, but FFLRP, you know, they got a sneak peek at how does declining enrollment affect our local operating levy, and how does that affect um, the district finances, um, more to come on that in December during the truth and taxation. It will be the most riveting truth and taxation presentation you've ever been part of, I can tell you that right now. Um, so, we'll go kind of more in-depth about conversations around what that looks like.
That's gonna kind of push us to do the right things in our school too, not be
Correct.
And not be making mistakes or keeping enrollment up, so that's very important.
Yeah, so the walkover from FFLRP with the operating levy and enrollment tied into the community engagement work that's gonna happen with our strategic plan. Um, our, our strategic plan is a lot based on the perception that people feel about us as a district, how do they feel we're hitting on these different areas. Um, the data from that's gonna drive our decision-making into how we build continuous improvement in our district and how we move the needle with perception data. You know, maybe our parents are saying behavior is a huge problem. Um, we've got stuff in motion with PDIS and our source tickets and stuff. And now we amplify that communication so that perception changes, which in turn hopefully drives enrollment gain back into the district too.
Yeah, and we got neighboring private schools that are nipping ass all the time, so we have to do a lot of things right.
Yeah, so, the work we're doing is great. It's awesome to get it ready to go and then, um, figure out how all our committees are interconnected to your work that's going on.
And sorry, I said that this was a action that we're proving, but we apologize, we already did it. So the, the timeline, now we're, it has been taken, not that. The final date to fill out the survey will be December thirteenth, um.
Yeah, that's right.
And it's sent on November eighteenth, between November eighteenth and thirty eighth of even. So.
So it goes out tomorrow, and it's via email?
Email, online.
Email, online, Facebook, printed in the paper, um.
Is there gonna be any mailed out?
We'll, we'll put a blurb in the, uh, in-flight, just as a reminder. It's very expensive to do direct mailers.
Very long.
So we figured between the newspaper, the in-flight, Word of Mouth, Facebook, websites, um, email tracking, we should be able to get a pretty, fairly hefty response. Yeah.
Wow, pretty exciting.
Definitely.
But to reiterate again, last day is December thirtieth, the ticket, so.
And hopefully we get, uh, a good turnout in the third days, and that's what drives it, so. There. Uh, Executive Committee. Don't really, we get emails now instead of meeting to go over what we're gonna talk about right now, so it's pretty cut and dry. Do you wanna add something? You know? In case if we're over what we're doing tight, you know? Okay. And then speaking of enrollment, so currently K through twelve is at five fifty-four, which is up from last month.
By one.
By one.
Yeah.
Yeah. And pretty soon, not too far away from the open enrollment program, right?
Yeah, that's coming online in January, so.
So I'll be here in a month.
Yep, so we will do our best, um, to separate the open-ed enrollment from the you know, relax better, turn button seat count that we've had here in the district.
Well, what we have to do.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, it will see some fluctuation here pretty quickly with our numbers on that, yeah.
Well, that's a good venture too, so that'll be excited.
Yeah.
Okay.
Survey going out. Um, is there the question here coming out? You can get it by email and then fill it out by hand?
Um, you can get it via, um, Survey Monkey, so if you just click the link, you know, go in. If you do want a paper copy, we'll put in there, like, contact the district office for the paper copy here. Um, we'll try to get some to the schools too, the front offices, so if someone wants to fill it out, they can.
So if there is somebody, like in Fairfax, that wants to fill it out, that isn't on Facebook, I can print it for them?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Cool. Thanks.
And we're happy if you reach out, we'll drop it in the mail for you, we're fine time, yeah.
Very good, anything else? On to action ends then, so. Yeah, we're gonna talk about the, uh, pathway. What's, that we're gonna call it the path?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I think pedestrian trail, pedestrian trail, I think that's probably what the legalese are calling it.
Okay, so, I have a motion to approve recommendation of the property of construction agreement between State of Minnesota and Department of Transportation, GFW Public Schools, and City of Given, for purpose of constructing a pedestrian trail.
I think I've already approved the pedestrian trail.
Okay, Emily's.
I'll take a second.
Take the second, okay, uh, Mr. Berg, you wanna elaborate on, uh?
Yes.
That, uh.
Yeah, absolutely, so right now, um, the trail stops at the edge of our property, um, because that's as far as we were able to asphalt up to without um, needing a cooperative agreement between City and Given, and you have the State of Minnesota, um, to complete the trail, so right now, um, it just stops right out there. What'll happen now is next spring, because most asphalt plants have now closed at this point. Um, we'll pick the project up and it will go from the edge of our property down to Ely Avenue. Um, part of this package agreement as well as solar-powered crossing lights to be able to go across the highway safely. Um, in the agreement, um, the city is in charge of ma- maintenance on the lights, maintenance on the crosswalk, the painting and everything like that, um, and they're also in charge of the maintenance of the path all the way up to our property as well.
So, Ely Avenue is that by the bowling alley, or, or what else is Ely Evan?
Not quite familiar with all the street names yet. Let me pull it up here.
Question was that Eli or Eli?
Eli.
Eli, is that how you said it? No, I don't know, it's okay.
The locals say Ely.
Ely, yeah, they say.
Yep, it is the bowling alley.
It is a bowling alley.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, under this agreement, the state is reimbursing up to two hundred thousand dollars of the project in the bid for the overall project, giving it two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, so the district will pick up the additional thirty-five thousand dollars that were purchased.
And was that in our construction budget already?
Um, the two hundred thousand dollars was, um, just based off of what Min Downhead said they would be willing to reimburse. They didn't think it would come over two hundred thousand dollars in the initial estimates, so the thirty-five thousand dollars will come up.
I thought you said the state reimbursed.
Up to two hundred.
Up to two hundred.
Yeah, we did not think, you know, if the bid came back at one hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, they would reimburse one hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, probably four bucks.
Yeah.
Um, but they won't bid, they won't reimburse above two hundred.
So, it's, we're thirty-five grand out of contingency.
Right, yeah.
Right. And this provides a avenue basically for children or parents in town to cross highway at nineteen. There won't be stoplights perceived, but, uh, cross.
Yeah, they're crosswalk.
What I mean.
Yeah, there's a, there'll be a crosswalk painted, and then those, they're like flashing green signs with someone folding hands, they stick a line, you know. Um, and they've got lights on them, so they're flashing their solar-powered lights. Wow.
Yeah, and then once they get older, nineteen, they don't cross another road, it's just a nice walk past our field.
Yeah.
At GFW School Field, and up, uh, through the baseball fields, softball fields.
Uh, it just runs right along the frontier and
Run the edge there.
Yep.
They have battery bikes, and also we have a speed limit.
Yeah, and electric scooters and everything.
So, the City of Given, um, City Council did approve this last week as part of the cooperative agreement, so the state's waiting on us to approve it tonight, and then it um, then they'll sign out their side too.
Yeah. Any questions? Who, uh, where is the snow removal on the airtime?
For the pathway?
Yeah.
So, that, great question. So we are working right now with the City of Given to take a look at her snow removal process, and that with Dan. We say, oh, just take a look at, you know, who's gonna be doing what and how to align it. Uh, you know, before they were taking care of the old elementary school, we were the first ones, and when the city helps plow out that area too. Uh, so we're still trying to figure out exactly, are they going all the way for a property line, are they going all the way? A lot of it's gonna get tiny, I guess, well, for that, uh, you know, how big a step do we get dumped on to? So, we're working through that process right now. Unfortunately, Mother Nature has some pretty expedited plans here, it seems like, so.
But that's, the snow removal is only for the path, not
Yeah.
Or, or parking lots or
Well, we have been talking about parking lots as well, okay, uh, because they go out first in the morning.
Yeah.
And so, you know, right now, the current elementary school is the priority, they, they have priority zones, the schools, um, both cities are the priority zones, so, um, you know, we're just looking, you know, what tools and resources do they have available? Look with you, so. Yeah.
Something that probably is gonna figure out some.
Correct, yeah. Little faster than we thought, yeah.
And worst case, you contract by snowfall.
Correct, yeah.
Until they get a
A better way.
Longer term.
Yeah.
All right, so, we did our motion, so I think we can vote, unless somebody else has any more comments or questions? Well, so, right, all in favor? All right. On to action item B. We have a motion for regulations and revisions to the twenty-five slash twenty-six school calendar year. Do you think maybe you just wanna give us the highlights and lowlights possibly of those revisions?
Well, lowlight is, um, our gym spaces and our areas back, fucking in the gym, including locker rooms, weight room, band choir rooms, um, are not going to be finished by the winter break, as anticipated. As right now, the scheduled date for the gym, um, is they'll be doing the punch list January twenty-eighth. Uh, so, working really closely with the cabinet team to kind of come up with another plan, um, at the committee of the whole meeting, we had a really good conversation. Where the school year ends, um, if we're able to do it reasonably. Um, so this calendar change, um, really is not cutting any days out of the schedule, it's not reducing student contact days. Uh, we are moving, um, staff professional development days around, um, as well as moving, uh, move-in days to line up right before that President's Day weekend, which we felt was a natural break. Um, in February, once the gym is ready, the band choir rooms, everything's ready to go. Um, so, really, February eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth are the biggest, um, changes to the calendar. Just for our students and our families, based on the fact those would be non-stud- um, for them. The exciting piece of that is the classroom size, which is right behind us here, is getting very, very close to being completed. A lot of the furniture is being delivered that first week in December, we've already got, um, TV screens going up and a lot of technology going on um, behind the scenes, so we'll be able to have a lot of our core instructional spaces ready to go, um, rather than the fast approach that we have with the elementary side of the building. So we're very excited about that pacing, when it comes down to that. Um, obviously disappointed that we do have to make calendar adjustment, but, um, we feel that this is in the best interest of our kids and staff to be able to move it at a default time. Um, hiring the moving company, um, makes me a lot more secure in the fact that we'll be able to do it within two days. Just based on their expertise, and that moving company doesn't have any, um, anything scheduled between January and February, so that's another piece where, you know, maybe we can start moving some stuff slowly over here, depending on the size of the equipment. Um, so, uh, right here in front of you are the current calendar dates, along with the proposed new calendar dates. I did my best to line up and memo to the board. Um, if approved tonight, we will, uh, get this communicated out as quickly as possible by the end of the week to our families. I know they already stopped the preliminary, and this is what, um, the superintendent's gonna be proposing to the school board for just.
That was in the email that went all about the, the way.
Yeah, yeah, so, so a lot of our families have already seen this, and so now tonight would be the formal action, and then by the end of the week, we'll get it sent out to families saying this is what, what's decided.
Fair. Any discussion, anybody? No? All in favor?
Do you make the motion?
We have no motion.
You had no motion?
We had no motion.
Oh, well, then we gotta have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to the school.
I'll second it.
And now, all in favor? Thank you. All right. Um. Can I get a motion for a recommendation approved, uh, tonight's donation, I found nervous. George, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and that donation is a fairly substantial It is for fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the donor is anonymous, and the restrictions are ten thousand dollars for the choir music program for the middle so, for, for middle school, high school. Two thousand for band, middle school, middle school and high school, and three thousand for professional development and supply fund for middle school and high school teachers, so whoever announces that's fantastic, and, uh, we thank them, thank you for your donation, we owe them. That's a chunk.
We can't send a thank you, I don't know.
Right, but hopefully. Thank you. Okay, definitely had emotions, now we do roll call.
We do. Stare.
Yes.
Freeze.
Yes.
Heard of.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Rosso.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. On to policies. We have a motion, uh, to approve the second reading of the policies. I made that motion. Also, you go down, thank you, George. So, the chunk of the two hundreds, the three hundreds, four hundreds, five hundreds, six hundreds, couple of, only two eight hundreds, and it's six or seven nine. Couple of, one, two, eight hundreds, and it's six or seven, nine hundreds. So a lot of them, but second reading, all minor changes, I don't know if you wanna.
Yeah, all minor changes, most of them were referencing updated statutes, changing the date. Um, some of them just have not been reviewed by the board every three years, that's what should be standard practice, so. Um, just knocking us back into the cycle of every three years, the policies will be reviewed, unless there's major legislative change.
And just to reiterate, these are all state-driven changes, so there's not much to do about it anyway. And all very minor statute, verbiage, one or two words, right, yeah. Um, we certainly sat through enough meetings, so. So I'm guessing you don't have any questions down here, go ahead.
This gets us caught up though.
Yeah, yeah.
So, on track.
On track and then scheduling a big meeting for, we'll do three a year, all right?
Yeah, we'll probably do a big reading, January, February, uh. Right before the legislative session, so we'll kind of know what's gonna be popping up here.
All right, so, any further questions?
I mean, absolutely not.
All in favor? All right, thank you. And that, bring this to a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, all in favor? All right, thank you, everybody, thank you, student council, thank you, representatives, thank you, Wade, for everything.